Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 26, 2020 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence. You've probably been paying attention. Major hurricane coming ashore tonight, southwest Louisiana, southeast Texas. Big storm surge, so please pray for all those folks that they get out of harm's way. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Jobson, if you'd lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Brian, if you please call the roll call for this evening. Dunn?
Here.
Doorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee? Grip?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Peacock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Ambrose.
Ten.
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. Probably an honor. Honored to know you. Good evening. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, again, like and welcome everyone in attendance and anybody viewing. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind you're talking to the council as a whole and you're sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout our Quad City region. Happy you're participating in our government and ask your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better and greater place. At this time, if you have your cellphone, please put it on silent or turn it off so it doesn't get in the way of folks talking. If you wish to address the council, please address us as a body or address it to me. Don't call out anybody as an individual. When addressing council, please step to the podium. I'll recognize you. Please give your name, ward, or address. If you're outside the city of Davenport, tell us what city you're from, please. Please be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you, and thank you for attending. I'll ask, please, if someone would move the City Council meeting minutes for August 12, 2020. Motion by Peacock, second by Dickman. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. JJ, I assume you sit down, so. All right. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, any update today?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Roger that. Next, will the members please move report to the Committee of the Hall for August 19th? Committee of the Hall for August 19th. Peacock move, Dickman second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Thank you. And then we have one presentation, Davenport Fire Department awards ceremony, East Locust Street structure fire, and it was a coordination between our police and fire. So we have a little presentation. So both chiefs and anybody else, if you please come up and take us through this presentation, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it's my honor tonight to be in front of you and tell you about the events that happened on July 3rd and recognize the individuals that were part of this day. On Friday, July 3rd, shortly before 11:00 a.m., there was a port of a structure fire in the 500 block of East Locust. Davenport Fire crews and Davenport Police Officers were dispatched to this location. While all crews were responding to this location, the dispatcher informed them that there were multiple children hanging out of the second-story window, and they are yelling for help, and there was smoke coming from the building. Police Officer Luna, Officer Dennewith, and Officer Schwartz were the first public safety responders to arrive at that incident. As the Davenport Police Officers arrived on scene, they found two roofing contractors, Anthony English and Anthony Buckley, had stopped and were beginning to deploy their ladders to the windows on the second floor of this residence. Several Davenport Police Officers assisted with getting the ladders deployed on the north side of the residence. During this time, it was noted that there was three female children hanging their heads out the window so that they could breathe due to a large amount of thick black smoke that filled the room. Police officers continued to talk to the children to keep them calm and reassure them that everything was going to be okay. Officers also gained information that there was a brother also inside the residence, but at that time they were not sure where he was at. Once the ladders were just below the window, where the children were located, Officer Cockshoe immediately climbed the ladder without hesitation and without due regard for his own safety. Once at the top of the ladder, he assisted the first female out. Officer Dennewith, Officer Luna, Officer Carter were at the base of the ladder, holding it steady and assisting as the trapped occupants exited the building. As the smoke conditions worsened, the two other children were able to climb through the window and climb down the ladder. After all three children were out of the second-story window, Officer Cockshoe again went up the ladder and through the smoke-filled window in an attempt to retrieve one of the family dogs that were still trapped inside. But due to the size of the dog and the large amount of thick black smoke present, he was unable to get the dog out. At this time, the Davenport Fire Department arrived on scenes and firefighters dressed in the appropriate protective equipment, went up the ladder, and were able to save the dog. Police Officer Brewer was able to take possession of the dog and place it in the rear of her squad car until it could be returned over to the owners. While this was happening on the west side of the building, a second ladder was deployed by one of the roofing contractors. The brother of the three female children was able to use this ladder to climb down safely. Officer Brewer observed this and made contact with him to confirm that no one else was inside the structure. All four children were treated on scene by medic, and none of them required transport to the hospital. As the rescues of the four children were being completed, Sergeant Willie and Sergeant Mayhew arrived on scene to witness these events and assist. The Davenport Fire Department began normal fire operations, and the men and women of the Davenport Police Department quickly changed their focus to securing the area and managing traffic control. Police Officers Jacobson and Officer Meyer assisted in the coordinated effort to maintain a safe perimeter, block roadways, control traffic along this well-traveled roadway on a busy holiday weekend. The efforts of all these police officers and members of our community prevented a potential tragedy. These individuals that we are recognizing tonight put the needs of others in front of their own. They worked as a coordinated team to overcome some unique and unprecedented challenges. And some of their actions were heroic. Without the quick thinking and coordinated actions of all the individuals involved, the outcome could have been much different. The actions that were demonstrated that day are beyond the normal expectations from our community members and our police officers. And as the Fire Chief of Davenport, I would like to thank all of them for their efforts to making a bad situation better. We were able to secure a video from social media that outlined some of the events that day, and I'd ask Brian to share that with us right now. Mr. Mayor, I would ask you to join us tonight as we present each one of these individuals with the chief's commendation for their actions that happened that day. First member I'd like to call up is Anthony Buckley. Next individual I'd like to call up is Anthony English. Next, I'd like to acknowledge some of the Davenport Police Officers. I'd like to call up Sergeant Jason Willie. Next, I'd like to call up Sergeant Chris Mayhew. I was corrected, that was Sergeant Chris Mayhew. Next officer we'd like to acknowledge is Officer Jennifer Brewer. She was unable to be with us this evening. Next officer I'd like to call up, Officer Curtis Carter. Next officer I'd like to call up is Officer Mark Dennewith. Officer Vince Jacobson could not be with us this evening. Officer Roberto Luna could not be with us this evening. I'd like to call up Officer James Meyer. A special commendation is being presented to Officer Jared Cockshoe. Officer Cockshoe was the officer you saw at the tip of that ladder, the one that went through the window multiple times, making the rescue of the children and also the family pet. For performing duties above and beyond the expectations of his position and placing himself in harm's way to serve his community and rescue people from a dangerous situation, we would like to acknowledge Officer Jared Cockshoe for his heroic actions. If I could please call him forward, please. Officer Condon, real quick, before you leave us today, I'm told that there's a video clip with a special message for you.
Hi, my name is Nadia Ambrose.
And my name is Asia Hodges.
We are two of the girls that were rescued from the fire on Friday, July 3rd, home of the street.
Unfortunately, we are in Iowa City for college, so we can't make it to your ceremony. But we still wanted to thank you for your bravery and for being there to make sure we got out of the fire safely. Today, we are both healthy and just began our college careers.
Both of our families are extremely grateful, and so are we. And my family and I especially wanted to thank you for saving our dog Taylor from the fire. You were able to carry her from the window down to the ladder, and we are very blessed that she stood up here with us, and it's all because of you.
Congratulations on your achievement, and we both agree that it is very well deserved.
Once again, we just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Bye.
Again, it's my honor to be up here to recognize these individuals. It just goes to show what great men and women we have in our community and our public safety. I'd like to invite Chief Sikorsky to go up and say a few words about his officers.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council and community members that are here, first, thank you for the opportunity to be here and demonstrate the performance of our police officers on that afternoon, but also our firefighters and community as we work together. I hope this demonstrates to you the commitment that your public safety officials have for our community. We're one community, and the commitment and bravery and courage that our officers demonstrate daily and obviously here today that you all got to see is just a testament to them and their commitment and to all of our public safety. So, thank you very much for this opportunity, and to the men and women of the Davenport Police Department, thank you for everything you do.
Mr. Mayor?
So I'll just say a few words. I'm honored to be part of a city that has people that give a damn and step up and, you know, public safety people run to danger when many of us run away from it. And those two girls are in college because of that wonderful officer, and you need to be very proud of your actions and all of you. So I'm just honored to be part of this city that has folks like you that don't question and go help folks and get them out of dangerous situations. So the city's very proud of you, and I'm happy to be part of it, and we owe them another round of applause. Thank you very much. Thank you. So I'll pause a second if anyone would like to leave, or you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but if you want to go, this would be the opportunity, and I'll pause a second so folks can go if they want. Okay, so I'll continue. Next item we have is petitions and communications from all of us. So, quick update on our MOU with SROs. We had another meeting. We discussed the purpose and mission statement. We actually drafted that. We drafted the duties and responsibilities. We drafted the expectations, the evaluation process, and the chain of command process. So that's out for everybody on the committee to comment on, but we actually wrote and put a bunch of things up on the wall and came with probably thirty so different things. And so the draft's out, and next meeting our purpose is to go over the draft and finalize it more. So we're moving right along, so I just wanted to update you on that. So, let's see, I see Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things tonight. First, I just want to thank all the neighbors around Sixth and Vine. We're very excited, and Alderman Grip. We're very excited to be moving forward with the traffic circle, and we had a very good meeting with them today. This has been a neighborhood project that two of the people at the meeting today have been involved for over ten years, and really closer to twenty, in thinking and wanting to have this traffic circle. We could not have done it without the neighbors. We're very excited about it. What you've seen there is a temporary structure, which we put in a couple of years ago to see how this would work. There will be an enhanced, complete traffic circle there. And again, we had a great meeting with the neighbors today, and I just want to thank them for... We have all kinds of organizations and people living in the neighborhood that are involved in that neighborhood, and many were around the table today. So we're excited about moving forward, and we should be seeing something by Christmas there. So that's exciting. So I wanted to say that. Also, just to share the census update, it was a pretty good week in Lake Wogagon. Our... We've got... Numbers are starting to move across the U.S. From last week, the overall response rate in the... In the country is up one point, not point one, but one point, which is huge. Iowa's up point four from last week. Points. Scott County was up point four. Davenport was up point three. We had... I'm happy to say we have two more census tracts move into green. The Great Census Track 131 is now above meeting or above where it was in 2010, and the census track 12701 over on the west side, kind of the upper west side, also moved into that category. And we have about eight census tracts that are within, less than two percent away from that meeting that number. That's pretty exciting. There are... We have thirty-four census tracts in the city, so eleven have met or surpassed 2010. We have eight more that are closing in on it, and hopefully we'll continue as the weeks go on, the few weeks we have left, we will see more progress. I wanted to invite everybody at this meeting tonight. Over in the corner, we have all kinds of census things. There are census cups, they change from blue to purple, which kids love purple. Nice, strong, sturdy census cups. We have kids coloring books, we have notepads, we have chip clips in English and Spanish. There's some bags to carry stuff away. If you have a group that's doing cleanup, or you have an event you're going to, or you have people you can get these things out to within the next few weeks, because we only have till September 30th, I'm inviting you tonight. Grab a bag, take whatever you'd like, and if you need more, get in touch with me, and we will arrange to get you more of what you need. We really want to get these materials out into the community. We've gotten thousands of items out, but these are the things we still have, so here's an opportunity. So please don't hesitate. Take what you need there tonight. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Honor. Once again, tonight we see why Davenport's America's greatest city. We have the greatest police department and fire department, and I'm incredibly proud of it, and I... It's so rewarding to see an event like this tonight, and oftentimes, we hear the naysayers about our great police department, and trust me, the majority of the people in our great city don't feel that way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Oh, okay. Didn't see your button. Go ahead, Alderman Peacock.
Actually, I wasn't gonna make no comments, but I think I am obliged to the police department. I think people in this room truly understand what it means to be part of public safety. Me being not too far removed from the United States military, starting off as a young infantry soldier, enlisted, then becoming an infantry officer. I too echo some of what my colleagues said about, you know, people need to understand when there's a fire, when there's gunshots, you know, some people duck and hide. But, you know, the police, being a paramilitary organization, understands the fear, understand their danger, or what it means to, you know, go into a situation where you may not come home. I wish majority of the population understand the gravity of that, that young officer, old officer, him or her, may not come home. So I understand that. The two young ladies who are now in college are truly appreciative. I think that everybody should understand what these officers are going through, because I, as somebody who was in combat, actual troops in contact, know truly what that means. That being said, I had the opportunity to listen to a Zoom call. I think it was hosted... Was it over the weekend? I can't recall. Oh, the Civil Rights Commission. I think this was the second one. And there were some concerns that was raised, and I took some notes. But there was a reoccurring... There was a reoccurring theme, and everybody thinks that there's something that needs to be done. And the reason why I'm actually talking, because what happened in Kenosha, Wisconsin? Another young man shot seven times in the back. Seven times. I've talked to the city manager, talked to the mayor, I've talked to the police chief offline, because I don't think our comments that we have should be made public, but the part that I will share is that I said, you know, we have to do something to prevent our city from becoming the next city like Kenosha, Wisconsin, Chicago, whatever. People like to throw those terms out, and we have to do something as a city council. Let me tell you this. We voted on everything in God's green earth. We voted for a fountain. We voted for something I really have no... Truly, God don't care anymore about. However, we suspended rules to do those things. I think we can suspend the rules today and take care of the actions of the city. We can do something. Don't say we can't, because I've seen it. I sit on the side of the diocese, and I said to my colleagues, you know, we can do everything for downtown. Why can't we use our power to right now suspend the rules, skip the agenda, and let's take care of what we need to take care of to reassure our citizens that we're not like all the rest of the cities, that we do support our police chief, we do support our fire chief. However, though, there's a balance. There's a fine balance. And once again, like I said before, I have the bit... I have the luxury and the curse of walking in two different worlds, and I see it clearly, clearly, by the text messages, Facebook posts, emails. I think that we have the ability to do something, but sometimes we get the, well, we'll deal with that later. Well, that's not on the agenda. And tell me, when is it going to be on the agenda? It's not... It's not for... Right now, it's not for... To be honest, it's not for applause, because I feel some kind of way right now. You know? We have to do something. I'm with the city manager, I'm with the mayor, with the rest of my colleagues, but someone who sits up here and... Like I said, I wasn't gonna say anything. I didn't even ring in until the mayor asked who's gonna speak. But after my colleague to my right, you know, he always said, "This is a great city. Let's make it great."
Thank you, Alderman Peacock. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Honor, for another opportunity. I too witnessed the Civil Rights Committee meeting, and it made me think. You know, we've had 140,00911 calls from people that were fearful, that needed assistance over the last year. assistance over the last year. We've had thousands of stolen cars by young juvenile criminals. We've had hundreds of shootings through our neighborhoods. And we all received the map where those shootings took place, my neighborhood and my ward, were one of the war zones where this happens at. You know, I agree, something has to be done. But remember, a little over three months ago, our great mayor had a call to action because the alarming increase of gun violence in our great city. Two months ago, a friendly protest against what happened to the gentleman that was killed by a police officer went very bad in our great city. It got so bad that people were frightened, because they were told there were gonna be people coming into their neighborhoods, taking in, taking their homes, taking things out of their homes. We had a board up our malls, many, many businesses in the Quonix cities boarded up their businesses because they were told there were gonna be some radicals and anarchists coming down from Chicago to, to take, take over our great city.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, ladies and gentlemen, please.
So, we do need to make some changes. What we need is to, we, we need a police department that's equipped. When these issues happen, they're gonna be able to protect the businesses, the good peoples in the neighborhoods, and by defunding the police department and taking, I think I understand. I've been dealing with this stuff for a long time.
Mr. Ambrose, please don't argue with the people, and people, please, respect each other.
Yeah, I try to respect people, Your Honor, and...
Folks, this is not gonna be a dialogue back and forth, or I'll have to ask you to leave.
I think the city council, with maybe Alderman Peacock's support, maybe we should put this on our agenda and have a discussion about crime, about our great police department, and where we're gonna go. You know, our staff starts dealing with the budget next month, and if we're gonna defund the police department, probably is a good time to start talking about it. Or if we're gonna support our police department and give them the tools and the manpower to protect our neighborhoods and our businesses, now is the time to have that discussion. So anytime Alderman Peacock wants to second with me, let's get this on the agenda, let's have that discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. You wanna talk? Alderman Peacock.
I really thank my colleague to my right for his words. Anytime we want to put this on the agenda, second.
Very good. Thank you. And just so the public know, any two Aldermen could put anything on the agenda anytime, just so you know that. Okay. So anybody else? Very good. Okay, moving along. I apologize, I apologize, Alderman Lee.
There's a little bell.
Roger that. Alderman Lee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of cycles ago, I brought up some questions, you know, on SROs in the schools, and I had the opportunity to meet with the chief of police and the mayor, and the city administrator, and council. And it was a very open discussion. We addressed the questions that I had brought up at the meeting, and I was very pleased with Chief Sikorsky's approach and his openness and his, he's digging into the literature about SROs into the schools. And I just wanted, and subsequent to that, I brought up some issues that I wanted the task force to consider as they did their work, as well as having talked to some other folks that are experts in this type of thing. I want to reinforce what I said at a city council meeting subsequent to that first one where I spoke. I really believe that Davenport has a real opportunity to do something groundbreaking that I don't think a lot of other communities are actually doing, and that is what Mayor described, where what are the roles of the SROs in schools? What are the roles that they will be interacting with students? What do we want from them? In most school districts, they're just hired and put in there and said, go, go out and do what you do. And I really think Davenport is making an effort to look at this, look at it openly. Oh, and I forgot to mention the, Mr. Kowalski, Dr. Kowalski. So I support what the task force is doing, and I think that you're moving ahead quite quickly, and it sounds wonderful, and doing it systematically. And I think we really do, and I said this before, we really do have an opportunity to be a model for other cities and school districts. I said at the beginning, I don't have a child in school, mine's thirty-one, and I don't support SROs and I don't not support SROs. I just wanted information so that I could make an informed decision. They, they are considering the issues that I brought up, and I appreciate that, because it's based on the literature and experiences from other school districts. And I'm really looking forward to see what they come up with, that they will bring before city council, so that we can review it, talk about it, and vote on it. But I just wanted to make it clear that I do support the work that the task force is doing, and I really do think we have an opportunity here in Davenport, with the, with the city of Davenport and the school district, to become a model for other communities with the work that comes out of this. That's what I'm hoping, and that's what I'm expecting. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor, Alderman Lee. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, we'll move on. There is nothing on the discussion agenda tonight, so we'll move, we'll move the consent, there's a motion to approve a consent. There's a second, by Dunn. Brian, please call the roll. Did I miss him? I honestly don't know where he went. You see him? Okay, very good. Thank you. So please call the roll on consent.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. The consent agenda is approved. Are there any ordinances or resolutions tonight? There are not. Is there any public with business? If you have something to say, please come to the podium, give your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, the city, please tell us what city you're from. You'll have five minutes. If no one's gonna speak, then so be it. You are, thank you. Please come to the podium.
My name is Emily Colayla, 1216 Court Street in Davenport, Iowa. I want to express to you that the city of Davenport has done a study of your Davenport Police Department, and it was completed in 2015, and it was found that, um, the Davenport Police Department has been pulling over minorities higher rate than any. This was never addressed at any, any council meetings, and nothing was done. I would like to know what officers are guilty of pulling over minorities more than anybody else. They should become out, and they should not be a part of the police department anymore. And when we say defund the police department, we mean to take away funds so that they can go and get help in, in communication skills, mental illness dealing, because we don't have mental hospitals anymore. Everybody's out wandering in the streets and homeless right now. You don't have a police department that is equipped to handle mental illness. I got more training in the military about mental illness than any of the Davenport Police Department has. Now, I want to come to, you guys need to come to grips. This has to be dealt with, and it has to be dealt with now, because we do not want any of our police departments to be having this, come to this crossroad, ever. We don't want our police officer over here, and a person that was innocently shot, when you could have done more training for them. Where is your call for justice now? How many more people has to be made, made in the news? How many more officers has to be put on administrative leave? The city of Davenport should be proactive, and they should do something about this now. Look at that study. Look at that study and find those records of any of those police officers that are on the payroll should be removed. And we need new people here to make this city great. Then we wouldn't be asking for defunding the police if you guys would just concentrate on the budget and get all these police officers the help they need. They're highly stressed. I was in the military, I know what a highly stressed is, and they're doing it day in and day out, day in and day out. Maybe there needs to be a rotation schedule so these police officers are not stressed all the time. Think about that. You guys are smart. Every single one of you up here got here because of your smarts. So come together and figure this out, and let's not make Davenport make the national news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would ask if you call, not for a long time, at least, so we can get through the speakers. Thank you.
Um, yes, my name's Amber Bordello, and I'm up here because I am a member of D cap, and on that committee, I've joined recently, but they, over the past ten years, have conducted a study regarding traffic stops, what, what she was talking about earlier. And it's shown for the past ten years that there is a disproportionality within traffic stops within the Davenport Police Department. When asked, when I asked the police chief, what is done, you know, what are they doing about this, I was told that supervisors, all white supervisors, decide if the incident was racist or not. That's very concerning. We have the police policing the police. That's not gonna get us anywhere. We have all white police policing the police. So that's, okay, you can sit up here. So that's a concern, you know, I think, I'm all about supporting our police, however, I want our police to protect and serve all, not protect and serve some and see others as a threat that they need to dissolve. In regard to the SROs, I asked last week, and I'm gonna ask again, I'd like to know if you could please release who's on that committee, because I want to make sure that it's diverse, that there's black, brown, all types of people on that committee, and let's hope that it's not an all-white committee. And I, I'm still waiting for statistics regarding school resource officers from the police chief. I'd really like, I know all of you are well-educated, and you know, to make a decision, you need facts, you need data, and we have no data from the police department regarding the benefit of SROs. Matter of fact, the only data that shows positive on SROs is opinion polls. All the other data shows arrest rates increase, black students are arrested more, black girls in Scott County are arrested more, so I'd really like to see some data that shows the benefit of these police officers within our schools.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Cassandra Irwin, Oss, Sixth Ward. I'd like to start off with saying, in response, if we're allowed to respond to previous...
Just talk to me or the council as a whole, please, kids.
I would like to say that in criticizing the police in a constructive manner, it's not saying, all departments, all organizations have room for improvement. It doesn't take away from how good they are or how good they can be. That's part of improvement. Saying that there is room for improvement doesn't mean that they're not good or great or could be better. Everyone could be better. So I take personal offense to any statements made that says that just because citizens are asking for improvements to a police department means that we are against the police or that we are radicals, as you see on some of our shirts. It's, it's offensive, it's un-American, and it's against any kind of working-class idea that we can make ourselves better. It's, it's ridiculous. But going forward, comments were made to you to draw your attention to, Mr. Mayor, to the rally on Saturday that was organized by someone who was making violent and guilt threats to members of city staff, to the Civil Rights Commission, who had openly and public pictures of swastika tattoos. And I just wanted to draw attention to the City of Davenport Code of Ethics and Conduct for elected officials, because members of city staff were in the press at this rally that was organized by someone who had a public swastika tattoo and who made violent, racist remarks towards members of city staff. So I just, again, wanted to draw attention to the Code of Ethics. Section eighteen, Compliance Enforcement, the Davenport Code of Ethics and Conduct expresses standards of ethical conduct expected for elected officials, members of the Davenport City Council. Just wanted to emphasize, members of the Davenport City Council, and members of all of its boards, commissions, and committees. Members themselves have the primary responsibility to ensure that ethical standards are understood and met, so that the public can continue to have full confidence in the integrity of government. The chairs of boards, commissions, and committees, and the mayor, have the additional responsibility to intervene when members' actions appear to be in violation of the Code of Ethics of Conduct. The city council, by a supermajority vote, may impose sanction on members whose conduct does not comply with these standards or other rules, protocols, or standards, including reprimand, formal, censure, loss of seniority or committee assignment, and recommendation for removal under Iowa law. The city council also may recommend removal of members of boards, commissions, and committees. I stand here to say that any city council member that attended that rally, again, organized by a member who publicly had a swastika tattoo, cannot possibly have the responsibility to assure ethical standards or have full confidence in the integrity of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Genevieve Graffney, and I live at Harrison Los, up right up the hill on Harrison Street. First of all, I want to commend those officers for what they did. That was wonderful, and we are very proud of them, and we would all expect the same treatment. It was marvelous. I, I, no Officer Jared, he's a great young man, and we should be proud of him. Referring to the, and I want to thank Alderman Peacock, this is his moment, and it's wonderful. I have hope. Speaking of public safety, two years ago this month, I stood back there, and the city administrator pointed to a crowd that was quiet, standing there peacefully, respectfully, and she said to get those people out of the room, and Officer William Martin grabbed me by the forearms and shoved me back through the door into the wall and out of the floor. Where was my public safety? I didn't think I'd come down to City Hall and not get home safely. I fractured my thigh, I was horribly bruised, I had just come from a left nephrectomy, where I almost died, but I took the hit, I rolled over, I looked up, and the chief, the police chief, was standing right next to me. to him, smirking. I controlled the situation by putting my hand out and saying, now you'll help me up, young man. I went and, uh, you know, the police brutality, uh, it took them 30 days to say that the interaction did not qualify as brutality. Well, I'm taught for 45 years, and trust me, that was not an interaction, okay? Um, as to what the young lady before me said, I would question how someone sits on a city council for 25 years and does nothing, and then has the unmitigated gall and entitlement, which is part of the problem here, to say that everything is peachy keen. How the hell would he know? You don't think he's safe to go wherever he wants to go, do whatever he wants to do, deal with people any way he wants to? He's a man. He's a man. He's the safe man.
Ms. Rafferty, please address this.
I'm sorry, I'm Irish, I can't help myself.
Thank you. I get you.
Um, so enough out of that, because that will be dealt with later on, but I have actually some positive ideas, okay? I don't think we should defund the police. My grandson is a sheriff's deputy in a large metropolitan area. I'm very proud of him, he considers himself a peace officer. So I'm not against the police. I don't think we should defund them, I think we should refund the people. I think that the neighborhoods need to be fed with compassion and money, and one of my ideas is, out of some of the policing funds, which is half the city budget, we should take three, or be given, well, it's our money, so, we should take $300,000 and buy the Greatest Grains building up on Harrison, Harrison Street's dying up there. The only thing happening is Ambrose, and during orientation, the students are told not to come into my neighborhood because it's a dirty, dangerous ghetto. And this is a Catholic university, one of their majors is social justice. So, we buy Greatest Grains and we open it up as the Clyde Mayfield Community Center. And there's the light on the hill. That is the neighborhood where the shooting was on. These kids have no hope. This is generational poverty. And for 25 years, one of you up there hasn't done jack shit, pardon my language, oh, to the little one, I beg your pardon.
Ms. Rafferty?
Um, so, so, that's a great idea, I think we should run with that, because what we'll do is we will tell people that you are paying attention, that you are listening, okay? We need a community center. And after COVID passes, you know, we shall get through this together. We need something up there. And the kids from Ambrose, they could volunteer, you know, the ones who are going to social work, teaching, law enforcement, as far as putting police officers into schools, a really bad idea. I taught for 45 years, and that's, it's an insult to the teachers and the children, and the Davenport police officers primarily, the majority of them, are not equipped to stand in a hallway and not intimidate, it, or incite. It's just not a good idea, there are better ways to go about that, but I want to leave you with that concept. $300,000 to buy the Greatest Grains building and name it after Clyde Mayfield, who was a great civil rights activist in this city. He fed this city with good food, good nutrition, good information, good attitude, lovely family. Let's get together and open Greatest Grains back up in Clyde Mayfield's name. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Cody Ehl, I live in the seventh ward. Um, I wanted to tell you about a hate crime that happened against me. Um, I was outed at work, I was working with Juvenile Justice Program, um, it was housed at St. Mark's Lutheran Church. Um, I was subjected to death threats that stated where I lived, what kind of car I drove, um, and where I worked. Um, this is all from being outed. Um, I reported that, and I had never heard back. Um, and I am the person that collects hate crime information for the Human Rights Campaign, MEI, that we do here. So I'm worried that if I have all this access, there are people out there who don't, who could be subjected to stuff like that, and it's not being counted, it's not being known. Um, so, I just want to say that I hope there is more discussion and some action, um, when we talk about reform. Um, I worry that if I receive no answer, a friend of mine who was shot outside of Mary's with a paintball gun receives no answer, um, on a hate crime, I, I worry that if we're not getting answers back from investigations, um, other people aren't, and that there are hate crimes being undercounted. We had two hate crimes reported to me from the police department for 2018. Um, I know that's an undercount, from people that I know. Um, so, I hope we can have a discussion about statistics and data, um, not only related to this, but related to traffic stops, um, disparities in arrests, um, the homeownership and renter rates between black residents and white residents, 82% of black residents rent, that's the highest in the state. Um, and that's how you build wealth. Um, schools are funded by property taxes. Um, so I think there just needs to be some action, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Athena Gilbreth, I live in the first ward. Um, wanted to let you know that the reason why we're all here tonight is because you're not listening. Uh, this is the 12th time that I've been here, and I keep saying the same thing over and over again, and so far, we have seen no action from you, we have seen no action from the city, in fact, I think it's getting worse. We have all the ingredients here, Mr. Mayor, for the next great tragedy. We have all the ingredients here to be on the news, we have all the ingredients here to be a community that will eventually suffer and suffer immensely. So, we are here again tonight to force that vote, to force it onto the agenda, and for you to take us seriously. You held a moment of silence tonight for hurricane victims, you held a moment of silence about eight weeks ago for George Floyd, but you failed to hold a moment of silence tonight for Mr. Blake, who was shot this last weekend. So, I need you to stop forgetting me, I need you to stop forgetting my son, I need you to stop forgetting black people, I need you to start looking at me, I need you to start looking at us, and I need you to start looking at this entire city as a whole. Otherwise, you're just a mayor of white people, and that's not okay. When you, when I talked to you a few weeks ago about what was happening with the Civil Rights Commission, what was happening with the police officers who publicly made statements that were racial, racially charged, you wanted to know about those, I sent those to you. When you came on to the meeting on Friday with the Civil Rights Commission, I was also on that meeting, and you acted as if you had no idea what we were talking about, and that's not okay. If you have no idea what it is that we're talking about, then why are you sitting there? Why are you sitting there? Why are you the mayor of this town? If you can't be the mayor of every single person here in Davenport, then what are you doing? We can, we can build parks, we can build fog machine, we can do whatever it is that is on your guys' little ass agenda, but here, at the end of the day, if I don't feel safe, if I don't feel like my children are safe, and if these people and other people don't feel like they're safe here, then what are all of you doing? We are a city that is in desperate need of some change, of some training, of some education. You have people who are sitting on a dais, who are going to a rally held by a white supremacist, and you know it because we told you that, Mr. Mayor, on Friday. You could have sent an email, you could have had said something, hey, there is a code of conduct here, don't go to this rally. Don't do it, because we're gonna, you're gonna get called out. So we're calling you guys out, have the vote, put it on your agenda, talk to us, we'll talk to you, we can make this city great, but we can also do it, and we can do it without you, and the rest of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ladies and gentlemen, please, please. Thank you. Please. Sir, please.
Please what?
Be quiet.
No.
Mr. Handle, anyone else? Would you like to speak, sir? Or just yell? Would you like to speak?
I'd love to speak. I want to know why we have Nazis.
Wait, sir, don't say that, that's not true.
He was with the Nazis.
Ladies and gentlemen, no. Stop. Please, if you'd like to address me or anyone else, please give your name and address.
Why does your council has, have a Nazi?
Sir, please give your name and address, or ward.
I'm not giving you my address, I'll give you my name.
Name and ward.
I don't live here.
Then please give your city you live in.
Clinton.
Fair enough, and your name?
Jaden.
Jason?
Jaden.
Jaden?
Yeah.
Any other name?
Gilbert.
Thank you very much, now please, you have five minutes to address me, or the city council as a whole.
I would like to know why we saw this man standing across the street with a bunch of, uh, what are known to be Nazis. They had swastika tattoos, and he's sitting right here. Why? Why haven't you done anything about this?
Sir, please address us.
I am addressing you. Why haven't you done anything about this? Is that better? Is that better? I'm addressing you.
Thank you.
Then do something about it, man. People are getting sick of this shit, people are killed in the streets every day because y'all can't change, you just stuff your pockets and sit there. You just stuff your pockets, that's all you do, you don't want change, do you? Because y'all would have did it already.
We get racist fired on the tablet.
Cassie, please. Please. Please, please, ma'am, I ask you to leave, you say it again.
That's my mother, you ain't going to talk to her that way, man.
Sir, I will ask anybody that calls anybody a name to leave, okay? We are not doing that with y'all, so please don't do that with us. Okay, please. Ma'am, please. We're being respectful of you, and all of you. Please be respectful.
If there was respect, then why is he sitting on the council? Why are you accepting of him sitting here? Y'all need to do something about this before more shit happens. If you don't want your, uh, little town set on fire, do something about it. I ain't going to be the one to set it on fire. That's on you. That's on you. Maybe you should change some shit. Be honest.
Don't cuss at me.
Change something then. You, you want to sit here and wonder why people are so upset, but then you sit there and you don't do nothing about it. Exactly. Do something, man, other than sit there and act like you don't know what the problem is, you know what the problem is.
Don't assume we haven't done something.
I haven't seen much.
Please, ma'am. Thank you.
I haven't seen much done, and I do agree with that, we need to remove the Nazi off of your, uh...
Don't call it again or ask you to leave, sir.
What, call him out?
No, don't use the word.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
But something needs to be done, something, because, I mean, if y'all are really doing something about it, he wouldn't be sitting here with that smirk, little smirk on his face.
Please, sir.
What?
Don't say that. I know, I'm getting ready, you're going to be asked to leave here shortly.
Okay. I'm cool with that. I'm still, I'm gonna get my words out while I got them.
Thank you.
Because that's what y'all are best at, is oppression, oppressing people.
That's not true.
What are you doing now? You just told me you'll have me taken out of the room, that's oppression, my good sir.
I will, if you're not, we're being respectful of you.
Yeah, right, you're gonna oppress me, okay, cool, we got that cleared. I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name or ward?
I'm Bill Handle, uh, Nashville, Tennessee, fourth ward. And, uh, just a couple items, always I talk about the riverfront, um, had a good meeting yesterday with the Riverfront Improvement Commission, uh, I could have done a little better in my presentation, but I think I made some good points. But, uh, uh, one thing I would like to ask is that somehow it needs to be, those meetings need to be more prominent on the agenda, it's hard to find that, and I've been the only person at the six times, I think, the last year, uh, I've been the only person in the audience, and that can't be, can't be healthy. So, if there's something we can do to make, make it, uh, more, pop up somewhat on the, on the calendar. So, um, um, yesterday, uh, basically, the takeaway was that I have, uh, some issues with the RDA plan, and, uh, the, I just wanted to quickly go through the things that I, I would think that we would, uh, be good for us to consider, uh, three items, uh, a, uh, a timeframe for the completion of the RDA work. Right now, I, I don't see one. Um, I think I suggest the FIGG is on its 15th anniversary, that was also the 15th anniversary of Skybridge, uh, at least for talking purposes, maybe we go for the 25-year, um, completion, that'd be 10 more years, we'd be able to get the bulk of the work in either the RDA or some other plan completed, and I think that would be a good thing. I, uh, the $57 million on the RDA plan, I think we ought to shoot for something less expensive and perhaps with more amenity, and, and these are the amenities that I think we ought to be looking for. Um, a downstream channel cat, something that Kathy Wine and organization have been pushing for a long time, I, I think having the channel cat only on the, the more affluent east side of the town isn't necessarily the best thing, people have gotten tired of it, and there's a lot to be seen on the west side, I know, I know your River West, uh, project is going to be addressing that, I just want it not to be forgotten. A ferry to Rock Island, the original River Action of 2004, uh, had a very strong tie between Rock Island and Davenport, that seems to be forgotten, I, I had never seen the word rock, heard the word Rock Island mentioned at any, any levy commission, uh, meeting. Uh, I think, uh, the, uh, the slogan, um, the Quad Cities is Joined By A River is something we can't forget, I mean, it's, it's really the truth, uh, many people, uh, people visiting on the Viking cruise lines from Europe, they'd come through the Quad Cities, and they'd think that we're one, one city, they'd think that one, one bank is, you know, the left bank, the other bank's the other, and to have us, you know, ignoring the other side is just something wrong. Uh, when you stand on a riverfront, looking toward Rock Island, the right side, you see the centennial, left side, you see, see the dam, the government bridge, you see Rock Island behind Davenport, it's a very nice, giant room, and something that, uh, that the Rivewision Report had talked about, rooms, so, that's our main room that I think we need to consider. Um, the other things I think we ought to add is amenities in the downtown, uh, riverfront are, uh, the farmer's market, I think we ought to consider ultimately relocating the farmer's market so that it's more an integral thing to the riverfront. Um, when I've, you know, as an architect, I mean, I've been at the farmer's market, you see the Skybridge in the distance, you kind of, well, in the middle of, you know, you've got thousands of people, it's probably our biggest event of the, of the year, all the, hundreds of thousands of people up the season, and the, there's no one in the Skybridge, no one down there, if the farmer's market could be somehow relocated to, uh, something closer upstream, it would be a lot better, uh, we'd, we'd not be the second, uh, most, uh, popular farmer's market in the state, but number one. Um, a, uh, many cities have a public market in their downtown, I think it's something we could do right now, the west end of the Freight House is probably as close as we can get, I think we need, ought to look at a, a special building just for that, if we can't afford it, I've got an idea of repurposing a building that I think would work just fine. With, uh, the, um, by the way, by moving the farmer's market, the one end of it could be the food trucks, now we've got the food truck, uh, amenity, it hasn't been taken off yet, but I think that could be the perfect place to have the food trucks for the farmer's market, with the farmer's market, uh, relocated. We ought to have more history, we ought to have the brick beach instead of, and then, uh, more diversity of art, more sustainability, and, uh, a more amen, a sky deck.
Please finish.
Building with more amenity. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Cassie, do you want to talk one more time? One more?
I just wanted to...
To me?
Yes.
Okay.
I got married on the Skybridge, I love it, just so you know. Um...
So give your name and ward again.
Cassandra Irwin, ward six. Um, I, I did want to let you know that prior restraint in regarding the First Amendment speech rights, uh, has been ruled unconstitutional, he does have the right to cuss.
So I, I don't disagree, I'm, I'm asking for decorum and respect, because we don't cuss at you.
Right. But, in regards to...
So I'm just asking for decorum and respect, that's all, I'm not saying you aren't the First Amendment.
Right.
I'm asking for respect.
The court has ruled that prior restraint in regards to speech, he does have the right to cuss, um, that would be a hard-fought loss.
I'm just asking for respect.
Right, and, and we are, in fact, asking for respect.
Fair enough.
In regards to the contract of the rule of government, where we have asked you to abide by the rules that this body has set for itself, censorship of this body, and when we have received white supremacist materials and asked for this body to do something about it, time after time after time, and now we have had a member of this body attend a white supremacist light, a member of this body attend a thinly veiled rally organized by a person with a swastika, widely available in a picture. widely available in a picture, publicly displayed. We have asked, and there is something you can do, and that is respecting us. And when the public is not respected in accordance with this body's regulations that they have set for themselves, the public is no longer obliged to respect by the rules that this body has set for the public. And that is what it comes to, unfortunately. If you want decorum, set those standards for yourself and abide by those standards. We are asking that you abide by them. Censor the member, call for the vote. If it's not on the agenda next week, it's gonna be a pain in the butt. Again, we don't want to come here. We don't want to do this. We have so, such better things to do with our summer. Then this, then sit with masks, then yell at you guys. Yell at somebody who doesn't even have the decency to wear a mask. Abide by the rules for the body, set by the body, or don't expect the respect back.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Josie Harvey. I actually live in Viola, Illinois, but I do run a nonprofit out of the seventh ward, out of the cobblestone. I am the vice president of Virtual Technology Group, and currently, we are feeding approximately 1,000 people in the Quad City area for free, off of grants. My struggle with this is that my nonprofit should not exist. Money is being spent and thrown into a brand-new police station with a garage so they can safely park their vehicles while our homeless are laying on the streets because the homeless shelter is falling apart. I don't know if you guys have known that, or if you, if you just choose to not look at King's Harvest with the tarps all over the building and the windows. I would also, I would also like to point out an experience that I had a few weeks ago that really shook me up. I was driving, I was on my day off, which I don't get. I am 26 years old, and I am a single mother. I'm driving down the street, and there is a seventy-five-ish-year-old man. His name is Bob, he thought. His hair was matted to the back of his head, and his beard was matted. He thought he was in his thirties. And during this conversation that I had with him for approximately thirty minutes before I gave him my last $20 bill that I had on me, I had at least six police officers drive past us. Nobody offered assistance. Nobody offered water. Nobody offered towels, a shirt, shoes, nothing. This man was handling his, this man was handling his shirt next to him because he had been using it as a rag to wipe his sweat off. I, I came here unprepared. I did not have a speech. I just felt like you guys needed to be aware of this or the fact that my nonprofit's funding for this month of August was cut in half. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi again. I feel like we're becoming friends. I don't know. Maybe not all of you. I'm back again, and I'm gonna keep coming back, you guys, until we do something about this. You can say that we don't want to be the next Kenosha, but we, when white supremacists go unchecked like this, it is just a recipe for disaster waiting for, to happen. People of this community notice when aldermen are at Nazi-like rallies. We notice, and we take that personally. And that is a recipe for disaster. We want to prevent. We don't want to come here every Wednesday and ask for this. We want to prevent from being the next Kenosha. We love our community. We love everybody in our community, white, brown, black people. And we need to see that reflected back to us. If we don't want to be Kenosha, we need to step up and say, not here. No white supremacists, no Nazis. That's all I'm asking. We need to vote somebody, who I will not mention by name, out of this council because it is enough. And we'll keep coming back, and we'll keep asking because we're done. And we just want peace for everybody, which includes black and brown people. Thank you.
Counsel, Kevin Luters, Davenport resident, representing American Sharp. I came here several weeks ago...
Addresser ward, sir?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an address or ward?
Nineteen twenty-nine Bell.
Thank you very much.
Sure. I came here several weeks ago for the first time. I came here because there has been white supremacist literature being distributed to schoolchildren, being distributed to our citizens via rolled-up mailers and put on their front porches. You know, I, I don't have anything prepared, and I'm gonna be brief. My, my friend Athena has said it, you guys are not listening. You're just not. You're not doing it. White supremacy is on the rise in this country nationally, and it's on the rise here. It's happening right under our noses. Nothing is being done about it. As a member of American Sharp and a citizen of Davenport, I am diligent about making a difference. So what I want to know is what are you guys gonna do about this? I don't see any action. Please start listening. Please, I implore you, Mr. Mayor. This is important stuff. And I want to thank Aldrin Peacock for letting us come up and say our piece here and do so in a, in a civilized manner. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dennis Platt from the sixth ward. Just real quickly, I just wanted to comment that it's pretty clear that flashpoints are developing. And these are things that have been stewing in the community for decades. And the way to get ahead of that is to get ahead of it. You need to get proactive. What three things can we do in the next sixty days? Go. Every department, when it's budget time, what six things are you gonna do next year to solve this? Go. Somebody needs to make the expectation. And we're here to do it. Yeah? I, I don't think you can sit in your seats for long without seeing the pain that your community is experiencing. And it's all very unnecessary. We'll be back.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's one more. I see him.
Hi. My name is Yoshiko Sunhatten. I'm the owner of Yoshis Tronix QC in North Park Mall of Seventh Ward. I'm here today to discuss the prevailing issue of boarded up and abandoned properties in Davenport, specifically the home at 1020 Warren Street. I'm currently working with city representatives in regards to this property, so I'll focus the topic of discussion on the general and systemic issue of abandoned properties disproportionately affecting minority communities in the city. I'm gonna break from my notes here. Didn't expect to come in at this time, kind of after what was said, but it's gonna actually help my point because there's ways to actually make the systemic, which is a key word, systemic change in the minority and black communities specifically. What I am looking for here is really an audience with the planning department in helping me with what I'm going to discuss here today. According to an article published by K W Q C in 2018, Davenport has over 800 abandoned properties, of which the majority affect low-income areas and comparatively high minority populations. When a property is abandoned, it statistically attracts crime while lowering property values of others in the surrounding area. This specific issue has been running points for mayors of Davenport since the early 2000s. And 20 years later, we're battling the same exact issues that have seen to only become worse over the past years. Past attempted solutions have focused on the city gaining ownership of these homes, rehabbing them, and getting them back into the hands of low-income owners. This is a self-destructing solution because it attempts to fix the symptom and not the cause of the issue. A byproduct of getting these properties into the hands of traditional property investors with hopes of rehabbing them is and has always been gentrification. When profit margins are the priority with little to no regard for the existing community, we end up back into the exact situation that we are in now. As someone who was born and raised in a low-income, high-crime area of Davenport, I understand how detrimental these abandoned properties can be. And not only the negative effects they have on the city, but most importantly, how they passively contribute to the systemic racism that plagues the black and minority community in Davenport. A quick example of this is in 2020, 36.9% of black people in Davenport are in poverty, compared to only 13.37% of their white counterparts and 14.5, 14.95% in the Hispanic community. That's three times the poverty level of almost any other race in the community in Davenport. When we look at these abandoned houses, we see a similar trend in density as we do poverty. We need a solution that turns these otherwise useless abandoned properties into something that can benefit the neighborhood, the minority communities, citizens of Davenport, as well as the city of Davenport. I have that solution. Due to the time constraints and nature of this platform, I cannot lay out my plan here today, but rather, my goal is to bring awareness to the issue, to let the board know a tried and proven solution that accomplishes this. We cannot keep using programs and solutions that are dated and no longer applicable for 2020. In the age of rapidly advancing technology and changing political and economic climate, we need a revolutionary idea that has potential for sweeping positive change that Davenport and the Quad Cities in general desperately need. I was hoping to be able to use the property located at 1020 Warren Street as an example of how I'd accomplish, how I would accomplish this. But due to legal hurdles and oversights, unfortunately, that became impossible. I have not given up on the property, but ultimately, my goal, as it should be the city's, is to improve the overall quality of life in Davenport for all, but specifically, the minority communities who have been systemically disadvantaged due to Jim Crow laws that even my very own father, who is 73 years old, experienced firsthand in the city of Davenport, to include but not limited to white-only pools and white-only jobs. I very much appreciate the audience you have provided me. I look forward to hopefully working with the city to address issues that honestly, in 2020, we really should be further progressed than we currently are.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Your honor? Ladies and gentlemen, please. Please. Your honor, please. Ladies. Fine, please call the board for move into executive session.
Your honor, we had a development on one of the offers today, and we could use some more time to investigate it.
So you don't want to handle it?
It would be better if we had a little more time to investigate it, I think.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.